Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the planning committee on this day, Tuesday, the 25th of November. Apologies for the late start of this meeting. Shall we start with item number one, which is apologies for absence?
Thank you, Chairman. We have apologies for the mayor, councillor Tom Buckley, councillor Gavin Jackson, councillor Rob Redlands.
Okay. And item number two is defractions for interest. Do I have any for this evening? Yes, councillor.
I'd like to declare what I think is a non prejudicial interest. I think that's the correct word, isn't it? On item on plan P25 S2980/4. As the neighbour who has commented on the scheme has an objection, it's my XY. So it's non prejudicial. So I do plan, I won't, well, regardless of whether I can speak in that on the matter if I wish.
Okay, thank you. And item three is to approve the minutes of the last meeting, which was held on the 4th of November. Do I have a proposer? Yes, councillor Paine, thank you. And second to back councillor Isman, all those in favour? Thank you. We don't have anyone at the public gallery this evening, so we'll move straight on to item five, which is plans amended. Please turn to page 14. So we have P25 S1967, it's a full application for Gibbs and Dandy PLC on Reading Road. Do I have any proposals? Yes, councillor Isman.
I'm going to propose that we object, recommend refusal for this for this application. They have been amended and there have been some improvements to this scheme from the earlier one that was presented to us in September. However, we haven't yet seen whether or not the heritage officer objections have been, or whether the heritage officer themselves believe that the objections have been met. And in particular, this is concerning the building line, which has been pulled forward from the existing building, the massing of the building in one large block. And although a small amount of additional planting has been made, it would break up the impacts that the very large modern building has adjacent to our conservation area. And although I would like to listen to the heritage, heritage officer, I think we should something object and listen to what the heritage officer has to say when that becomes available.
Okay, thank you. Is that seconded? Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on this? Yeah, I mean, I think it's, nobody around this table, I think, including lots of the people who have actually made statements on this statement. And we all agree with the principle that this site needs to be redeveloped and it's very welcome. And I don't think the applicants, in my opinion, are actually too far away of achieving what the heritage officer is asking of them. But I don't think they're quite there yet for a number of reasons. So yes, I'm, there are my observations for this particular application. Okay, unless anyone has anything to say, shall we?
I was going to say, I agree with you, although I'm proposing that we object. A plan not hugely different to this is likely to come forward and be approved in time, which is needed. The building is empty in time and can't just sit there like that. So I look forward to a plan coming forward which the heritage officer can support.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all those in favour of refusal? That's unanimous. Okay, so turning to plans new, we've got agenda item six, which is P25 S2980. It's a full application for studio at, how do you pronounce that?
I call it Pitt Cottage.
Pitt Cottage, Marlowe Road. Angus, do you want me to read out the number?
No, I've got the number. It's, I've got some advice for you, Chairman, if it is helpful advice.
Yes.
And a lot of comments that were relating to the Homes for Ukraine scheme and what that means for planning. So Homes for Ukraine is a government scheme allowing residents to temporarily coast Ukrainians. It's well supported, but it doesn't override planning law. An outbuilding used for living accommodation still needs the right permissions. The humanitarian benefit is a genuine material consideration, but it has to be balanced against heritage and policy, including balancing the previous planning permissions to refuse and the subsequent loss of appeal, the change of use to ancillary living accommodation, so that's for. Members wish to support the application, you could do so on a strictly temporary ancillary basis, tied only to the Homes for Ukraine or extension schemes, with the use reverting afterwards or when the sponsorship ends. You could also consider recommending that the window facing open properties be obscured, glazed and fixed shut. If however, you consider the protocol to create an unacceptable independent dwelling within the cureverge ballistic building, as per the previous site applications and planning inspector appeals decision set out to do, you could therefore determine that it would cause identified harm in accordance with those previous decisions. And you could regularize the application site into separate dwelling accommodation and consider recommendation refusal on heritage character precedent grounds, noting that the benefits of the Homes for Ukraine scheme do not outweigh the harm in this specific location as a result of the application.
Okay.
Okay, so it's background information on the scheme itself, which the application rests on, balancing the previous refused planning application and decision by the appeal to uphold that refusal.
Okay, thank you. I will just read out the application number, which is P25 S2980, full application. Okay, councillors, any observations at all, or would you like to go straight to a proposal?
I mean, it's a temporary application, is that what the saying, it's the same.
Yes.
It's a temporary.
Under the Homes for Ukraine scheme, yes.
It says, yes, it's temporary change of use.
Well, it says, that's the intention, but is that legally enforceable? I mean, I think the advice that we got says that we can restrict it to only apply to the Homes for Ukraine scheme. But that isn't part of the application.
It's listed as the Homes for, Homes for Ukraine scheme?
Continuation of Homes for Ukraine.
Yes, but it doesn't indicate that the right to use it for residence is withdrawn once the Homes for Ukraine scheme on that site stops.
We can put that.
Yes, I agree. I think that's something that we would need to make sure we did. I've got a couple of other queries about this, which arise out of the objection, the neighbour who objected with the, that it was unablely and intrusive. And it appears that there is currently an enforcement complaint in progress on the refused application having been implemented on this site, both the windows and other changes. And so I'm, so in practice, it looks to me like a retrospective application. In that there is already Homes for Ukraine resident there. Some of the changes that were refused on the application have supposedly been made and are the subject of enforcement. Therefore, legally, what is the position of considering an application here which isn't retrospective or doesn't claim to be retrospective? And on that, it's unusual position for us to find ourselves in. Maybe we can just ask that question in our response, in our recommendation.
Yeah, we can do it. So as a statutory consultant team, we were balancing against what the policy says and what we're allowed to do with the building itself. With enforcement, that is the district council going back into policy and saying, is this permissible, yes or no, based on local plan policy, Labour Plan and Government Policy? For Homes for Ukraine, for example. That would be the enforcement team that have to determine that. Our recommendation, if I read, if I heard you correctly, the recommendation is for people with a caveat, this is temporary, only for Homes for Ukraine scheme. That would be balanced against the planning legislation and what enforcement company do. I don't know the detail, what the enforcement officer is looking at exactly, the detail that, they don't share that with us. We wouldn't see that unless we were the ones that were making that enforcement complaint. So unless, no, no, we wouldn't see it, we just would not see it.
We've seen Labour's comments on the scheme, which include his concerns and the fact that he's raised complaints under the enforcement process.
So the enforcement team will only respond back to that complaintant with the outcome. All we can do is look at it on what we can see in the plan application. So I think we have to disregard, we can understand it in terms of our decision. We can't second guess what the enforcement officer is doing or what their response may be.
It's separate to this side of the.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, any proposals?
I was going to say propose to accept under the conditions that, which is laid down, and obscured windows and things like that. And then obviously, if it gets fed back to some of the issue council, then.
Okay.
Then I have to deal with it on that side of it.
Okay, is that a seconded? Yes, councillor Paine. Okay, so would any other councillor like to speak? I mean, I'd just like to speak in support of this application on a temporary basis, like you say. So for as long as the Homes for Ukraine scheme exists. It's a highly unusual situation, but of course, that country is still deemed an unacceptable place to go back to live when it's still being bombed.
Yeah, I think, to be clear, I've really pulled the charitable motives behind the application from the applicants. We're all sympathetic to the awful situation that Ukrainians find themselves in.
But as soon as this scheme is over, then it must be turned back into ancillary use as a studio.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's the proposal, it's been seconded. All those in favour? Thank you. Did you get all the conditions in there?
I did, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so the next one is P25 S3382, and it's a full application for Sacred Heart Church Hall, Vicarage Road.
Proposals, we support it. Seems a good application to me, that goes forward.
Seconded? Yes, councillor Paine, thank you. I was wondering actually though, if you wouldn't mind, they wouldn't mind destroying the hedge that they're going to take out. What do you think? You know, they're taking out a hedge, which is a nice bit of screening. Because there are some beautiful aunt houses behind. And I'm sure they wouldn't want to look out on some new whirring fans maybe. What do you think? Are you happy to?
I'm happy to. I just that on the, yeah, well spotted. So I'm happy to add that into our positions.
Okay. Right, would any other councillor like to speak? Okay, all those in favour, subject to the hedging?
I'm sure they will.
Yeah, I'm sure they would. It's easy to do, it's not a very big space. Okay, and the next one is P25 S3429, it's a listed building application for 12 Grace Hill.
Yeah, I propose acceptance. It's a lifelike replacement and the plan's very clear about what the old one is. New one will look like, which is almost identical apart from the, that's a condition.
Okay, yeah, I'll put a second that. Would anybody else like to speak? No, okay, all those in favour of approval? Thank you. That's good, thank you. Next one, P25 S3445, it's a householder application for 57th Close. Yes, councillor Isman?
I noted that the Henley Society observation proved the concern about the overlooking of the dormer. I couldn't see that that was likely to be an issue at all. And although I might be wrong, and as the Henley Society noted, there was no objection from the neighbour. So I'd like to propose that we approve it without reservation. Honestly, I don't think there is an overlooking problem, but I may be wrong.
Okay, so seconded? Councillor Paine, thank you. Would any other councillor like to speak? Okay, all those in favour? Thank you. The next application is P25 S3371, it's a householder application for 247 Grace Road.
Yeah, I'll have to propose that we approve.
Yep, is that seconded? Thank you, councillor Eggleton. Would any other councillor like to speak? No, all those in favour of approval? Thank you. Next application, I think this is a retrospective application, if I've got it mistaken. Yeah, P25 S3446, LDE.
Lawful Development.
And this is for existing use of part of the ground floor, first floor and second floor, the House of Multiple Altification, perhaps 10 residents. Any observations?
Propose approval.
Is that seconded? Yes, councillor Paine, thank you. Would any other councillor like to speak? No? Okay, all those in favour of approval? Thank you, that's carried. Next application is P25 S3483, it's a householder application for Ormsby, Grace Hill. Councillor Isman?
In many ways, this application has merit, but unfortunately, I think it's also quite significantly flawed in that it's an overdevelopment. Why five parking spaces are needed, I can't imagine. It's also, so it is unablely. And there are concerns about the access of Grace Hill, of those five cars. So on the grounds of being unablely, overdevelopment and access, I propose refusal.
Okay, thank you. Is that seconded? Councillor Paine, thank you. Would any other councillor like to speak? No, all those in favour of refusal? Councillor Eggleton, are you voting or?
No, stay there.
Absolutely, okay, thank you.
Would you like your own recorded, councillor Eggleton? It would be interesting.
Okay, so the next one, P25 S3500, it's a householder application for 40 Wilson Avenue.
Propose approval. I was slightly surprised, this needs a planning application, but.
I was surprised as well, because I thought they would.
So they've got to pay for that application.
Yes, they have.
They would have had to pay for that application.
It's got, I think it's something to do with having to be, it's got to be embedded in the street somehow, hasn't it? That, you know, the power line.
Oh, so this is coming out of their boundary line.
It's on the front of their property.
It's by the front door.
Because they don't have a driveway. You know, the power line's got to be some kind of embedded somehow across the street.
That isn't part of the application.
No, it's on the building, it's on the front of the building.
No, but what I'm explaining is, that is why OCC have got involved in this, because they're.
They have to trail the paper across the.
So they're saying you've paid your X amount of money to trail your lead across the highway, but you still need planning permission for the actual pod. That's my understanding of it. But Oxfordshire County Council have said you must now go and seek planning permission for this and then come back to us with your planning permission and we can give you the authority to go ahead with the highway. It seems a bit convoluted, doesn't it? But this is obviously the system that's been set up. I love the way that the applicant says to be obscured by a plant box.
When you look at the application photographs, there is a plant box in front of the site, I have to say. Yes, and it's where the buildings are, where the buildings are situated.
It's not gone past the building, right, has it?
Do you know, I think.
If you have a look at the site photograph.
I think, do you know what? I think this company here are missing a trick. They need to make one that's stone coloured, brick coloured, all sorts of different colours so that they blend in more, don't you think? Perhaps they've got them in development.
Yes, I think the county council did say that public liability insurance would be needed. Coming together the cable. Doesn't say that, I'm not sure it's going to be embedded on it, whether it's going to be covered by.
I could have thought.
It's a cable channel.
Cable channel.
Oh, it says cable channel, yes. So yeah, it must, it must be going underneath the either the pavers or the ground.
Anyway.
It'd be cable channel in the short way.
Quite a lot, I'll keep you all informed.
Trip over.
I presume we're going for approval.
Yeah, I think I proposed that, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all those in favour? Thank you. Okay, so that concludes agenda item six. Just quickly back to. Agenda item seven, objections calling applications. Do you want to go for Gibbs and Dandy, just to make sure that this is kept an eye on through its journey with the planning authority?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So is that all approved by English Heritage? Obviously, they're going for handmade windows.
Sorry, you've got me there.
I've forgotten the other one.
We're still on objection calling applications.
This is the one on page 15, the Gibbs and Dandy. On page.
Yeah. So we just want to keep an eye on the heritage officer is saying and how this can be, you know, I do think there's room for improvement.
And would you like me to attend the committee meeting, should we go to committee?
Yes, yes, hopefully we'll get that far, but we'll see.
Yeah, I mean, it would depend on what the heritage officer does eventually decide as their point of view. But in principle, yes.
Lovely, thank you. Number eight is just an open decision notices. All noted, yep. Number nine is progress report for applications called in. Agenda item nine, I've got the wrong page number on there, haven't we? Never mind, never mind.
Oh, really? Honestly, honestly.
Now, there's just one that.
I did that three times when I was printing those documents.
I didn't spot it either. So we just need to add Emster Works on there, which was called in last, the last meeting, so we'll pop that back in. But there are no other, there's nothing else to update you all with on that one.
No, and we haven't heard back from SODC on that one yet.
No.
Didn't expect it to be, because it was a temporary motion.
Yeah. Took us a while to get that one right, didn't it?
Just a touch.
Yes, yeah. So one question I did have for you councillors is, did you want to keep applications in that are going to appeal? You know, because we actually, once they've gone through the planning authority, we tend to take them off. But perhaps we'd like to follow their journey all the way through to appeal if they end up at appeal? So keep them progress reports?
I would keep them progress.
Keep it all on.
You know what's going on.
I think that makes sense, doesn't it, to keep them on? Yeah, let's do that.
Do you also, would you like to consider, Chairman, having applications that go to committee to be heard for Henley anyway, so that you can see what those outcomes are?
I'm not sure about that.
Because we have the.
I know, but that's an unusual one.
It was an unusual application that we have on item 11.
I like to, I like to just keep tabs on the ones that Henley Town Council have. I know where you're coming from, but what do you think? I think I prefer just to keep the ones that Henley Town Council have said no to.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah? Otherwise, it's a bit confusing maybe. We'll keep, we'll keep these other ones in the body of the.
Sure.
Body of the agenda. Okay, thanks. So we've done item number nine. And I'll put plus appeals, Emster done appeals. Number 10, notification of appeal decision by the planning inspector. Did you all get the chance to have a look at this one?
No.
So this is the one that concerns Rutherford Field Road. This is the application to demolish the current building, current house, and to build an up house in the back garden, which is basically known as a backland development, which SODC don't actually like. And they have it in their local planners, no backland development please. However, the planning inspectorates have found in the applicant's favour, subject to a number of conditions. So the conditions are actually quite tight and so they should be. Any observations from you?
Well, we've given the appeal decision. I can't see through my emails.
You have to click on the link.
Oh, well, right, okay.
I can send you the decision.
It's okay, I can click on the link.
Okay.
Just one if I missed, yeah. I'll look and see what.
Basically, what's.
I can't read the application.
If you were looking at it from Harpston, looking upwards, there are, there is a house that's been built in someone else's back garden, basically on the other side. So he was basically saying, you know, that that's set a precedent here, some kind of precedent. But what we were saying was, we don't want the precedent to continue down the road, you see, along the valley.
Yeah.
So.
Harpston are particularly focused on that problem. They envisage Harpston being absorbed into Henley over the decades. And that was a constant concern of theirs, yes.
The thing is, once a precedent has been set, it's very hard to sort of undo. I mean, all you could do is to keep control of it, is to say, we will allow this to do this if it's within this, and with English Heritage and all the other things that we can throw at it.
I just really feel for the residents who live nearby, because the disruption is going to be just horrendous. You know, demolishing the sites and then building two new massive houses. It's just going to be, go on forever. It's going to be noisy, dusty, vehicle movements. I just really feel for them.
Yeah, I mean, there shouldn't be a concept of precedent really, because each application should be judged on its standalone application, on its own merits. And that, but as you say, when it comes to backland development, the district council have a policy on that. Maybe when it comes to a neighbourhood plan, we could look to putting something in there to say that that's the area that we don't want backland development there. So that's maybe something to consider when we review the neighbourhood plan over the next year or two.
I could just put in any.
Well, it could be, yes, I think it should, I think it should. But if we specifically say that we don't, we are against that and it's contrary to the plan, then we may have better planning reasons, or even better planning reasons for refusing it, beyond the ones you think you would just have.
Okay, the next one is a verbal update. Item 11, which is the planning application committee hearing date for One St Mary's Close, and this is the one that we've been referring to before.
So it was heard last week, councillor Arlett updated me as well, it was approved. So this was the unusual one, this is about the fence line on the front of the building. Yeah, it was interesting.
Is that your technical term for a?
Yes, because ordinarily, you could look at it and go, what's the point in that? You know, but the principle was the street line, it was the principle of where it's situated. And so it went to committee and was approved. So I think for us, in terms of what we've learned from applications in that particular area, what the mind of the planning committee is really. It was, it's, it is for noting, I can send the planning decision notice out to you if you would like. Send it out to you tomorrow.
Yeah. And the last one for this agenda is 12, which is government consultation on reforms to the statutory consultee system.
So members will recall that in the summer, we responded to the government's response, the government's consultation on changing planning committees at the district level or planning authority level. This adds to that. In summary, the government's consulting on reforms to statutory consultee system because it believes there are too many low risk allegations being sent for comment unnecessarily causing delays in efficiency. Although town and parish councils aren't directly affected by this change, the changes could influence who we turn to for expert advice. So statutory consultees, like the Environment Agency, Natural England, for example, are currently consulted automatically on many applications. But the government wants a more focused, better resourced system, where they're only involved when input is genuinely required. And they did provide a whole detail of stats, which I can forward on afterwards. And the key proposals are to reduce statutory consultees, like Sporting England, the Gardens Trust, the Theatres Trust, and tighten the rules on when those consultees must be consulted, so that only the more significant or sensitive cases automatically go their way. Also, part of the proposal is to let the planning authority set and keep their own planning fee. planning fees, and for that can come to stay within the planning service, rather than being used by other council departments, which no doubt would be very welcome. Because at the moment, it goes into the big cash pot of the council and gets redistributed for the other service. So this is saying, eat what you kill kind of thing in the fees. What this means for us, while I don't really affect it, the biggest change for us, Henley Town Council, Parish Town Council really, is how the Environment Agency plans to move from a bespoke advice on routine applications to standing advice and standardised responses for lower risk cases. This could affect how issues like flooding, contamination and water management are flagged in applications that we review. While we will have to, as a consultee, and where we think specialist input is needed on an application, that we specifically ask South Oxfordshire District Council to formally consult the relevant statutory body. So in doing so, we will need to be clear and specific about why especially, if, why we want them to consult, especially if the changes to the planning committee process take place, that we were consulted on in the summer. So if they're introduced, we need to be really clear when we say, we think there is a risk to contaminated water or floods and all that sort of stuff, and ask specifically for those for a standardised report to be made.
Okay.
It's bringing to your attention further change which is going to impact how we, as a town council, respond to planning applications.
Yes, councillor Ossman?
If we're able to comment on this proposal, then my feeling is that the basic thread is sensible in that if a third party, an organisation like Environment Agency or Sporting Glen, whatever, do not need to comment on an application, they need not be asked, and that seems entirely sensible. What I'd very much like to see is when such an organisation does need to give its input to an application, that it is mandated to do so, and the planning application cannot be considered without it. And if that were the case, we might not see the problems such as we saw at Thames Farm, when the Environment Agency failed to comment on the application initially, which leads us to the problems that we're seeing now.
Yeah.
So I would support not consulting when they don't need consulting, and having to consult be consulted when they do need to be consulted, which may not be, may seem blindingly obvious, but I'd see no harm in saying that. On the expenses, I think the proposal to, for the state government legislation to control where, how can those authorities manage their funds as a third, which is a high qualification of fees and income, which necessarily constrains the district council from controlling what happens to his money and budgets, and so I think it's a foolish suggestion. Those are my takes, I don't think.
Okay, when you read the whole government response, I'll send the link to you as well, it does set out how many, let's say, lower risk applications are responded to each of the departments, where you do get the no further comment kind of thing, and it's a high percentage of them are. What they're saying is that they will also have to report back to, I believe it's the minister, how many applications they have responded over a certain time, or da-da-da, for the more detailed ones, and that will be a standing report, quarterly report, I believe. I can see if we can respond to that and come back to you individually, or as committee for the next meeting, I can't remember when it ends exactly, but I can do that and update with the next committee meeting, even if it is a simple response to say, agree, agree, but can you make sure it actually works?
Yeah.
And as for the high qualification of fees, I'll keep my personal thoughts to myself on that, but as I do lead a planning department, but I'll find a way of responding to that part of it. Thank you.
I mean, we don't know how long the Environment Agency is going to be with us. Actually, one thing, which is another matter, but one thing I was going to say was that, yes, we perhaps in future, should, if these proposals go ahead, we should be careful to include in our recommendations, whether or not, we say subject to heritage officer quite often, but subject to Environment Agency approval would make a lot of sense if we deem that necessary.
And that's what we have to be quite acute about responses we put in saying, we think this is the risk, even though we are laypeople, sorry, members of laypeople, and making that concern, or raising that concern, but then making sure that we require the EA to respond as part of our work.
We recommend it, we believe the EA have, it would just need it here, as it, there are risks associated with the development, which need to be understood and either mitigated or.
Yeah, absolutely.
I've just got one more item, which is actually on the agenda, and that's to let you know that the planning inspector has approved the 5G mast at Makins. Now, that actually came through just after we actually sent out this agenda. So are councillors familiar with the, basically the findings of the planning inspectorates?
Yeah, I've read the report, it was an interesting appeal decision. But basically, when all the text of the inspector's report went one way, and then right at the last sentence, he decided to approve it.
Yeah.
That was all I could do.
Yeah, that basically sums it up very well. But basically, are councillors happy for me to work on a statement to the community with our communications manager, because the community put a very spirited response into this 5G mast, and I think they deserve, you know, a wholehearted response from, robust response from Henley Town Council on this. So are you happy to work, for me to work with Daisy on this one?
Definitely.
There's no usual approach, chairman, to do that.
Well, Daisy's arguing to do that.
Okay, I mean.
She just wants to put a small statement.
Our communications officer, Daisy, yes, of course. Yes, absolutely, I mean, it's unusual to make a resolution to do that, to work with the communications officer to do that, anyway, is the mind of the committee. And I'll note that in the decisions notice earlier on in the minutes, rather than right at this moment in there, for the way it was flowing, but yeah, okay, thank you.
You both be all happy with that?
Yeah, but of course, the planning decision is now open, but opposition for landowner is not.
Yes, indeed, we'll take that with another committee.
Yes, that will go through finance and R and A, not sure which.
Yeah, I'm sure our town clerk will be informing us.
But yeah, it's one step, one step is now complete.
Yeah.
And yeah, the mast is now approved. It will appear as a non-exempt. We can't worry about that. Whatever we think about it, we can't change that.
No, there's nothing, there's the end.
We have other plans to do that.
Yes, indeed.
I just think it's wrong in the aspect of.
Thank you for your contributions.
Properly made the decision, not even visiting the people of Henley, or gone, I mean, we're supposed to be protecting our green spaces, yet we're, and that Makins Recreation Ground has got covenant, got a covenant on it, so it wasn't supposed to have any structure or any buildings put on it, unless it was for the community, and that's not for the community.
Well, you could argue it's for the community, because it's improving their telecommunications.
No.
Yeah, I mean, that is one argument, isn't it?
Well, no, I support Makins, wouldn't be very happy about it.
Sorry, the meeting is over, by the way, I thought I'd make that clear.
Meeting ended at 19:44, thank you.
You got a little spare, wasn't it?